All this being to order, this is the special board meeting. It's Tuesday, February the fourteenth, eight twenty-three, it's ten o'clock A.M. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melody Lane, Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action? We begin with the roll call, District One.
Crosby is here.
District Two Supervisor English is present, District Three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four, conference ID two four nine, three eight six, four seven five pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero four direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. We have two action items today. Number one, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve demands and budget amendments for operating transfers.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second, and I have one person who wishes to speak on agenda item number one. On Teams, Allison Morris.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, good morning, my name is Allison Morris, I'm from Portal, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address warrant number six zero two three seven in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents to Elias Law Group. This represents attorney's fees and associated costs for the plaintiffs who sued in response to the expanded one hundred percent hand count audit proposed by Supervisors Crosby and Judd. Regardless of what statutes are quoted, or however entitled you felt to pursue this, the ruling went as our county attorney predicted it would. In other words, you lost. But Mr. Crosby, you assured us that you'd win the lawsuit and there'd be no costs at all. And Ms. Judd, you repeatedly stated that you would pay your fair share. What happened to those promises you made to the citizens of Cochise County? The court ruling states that the assessment of these costs is on you two alone. It specifically excludes defendant English and defendant Mara. Why? Because they both refused to participate in what each believed were unlawful actions promoted by the two of you. You may have convinced yourselves that you have every right to pursue the expanded hand count, but clearly, that was not the opinion of the courts. So why now do we taxpayers have to foot the bill for your misdeeds? The total costs now are close to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars and still mounting. You should be paying these expenses yourselves, as you had promised. And if you don't, you should at least apologize to the citizens of Cochise County for burdening them with this frivolous and costly mistake. Mr. Crosby and Ms. Judd, with all due respect, you both have proved to be untrustworthy, pursuing your own agendas at the expense of county taxpayers. I am not alone in feeling that you two should not be in elected positions. Please, do us a favor, resign now and save us from further costs and national embarrassment. Thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second.
I'd like to respond to them. It is very unfortunate that those legal expenses have been incurred, but it is not my team incurring those expenses. And Madam Judd and I voted on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two for sixteen six oh two B. That concludes my remarks at this time.
Is there any comment, Ms. Judd?
No ma'am.
Then I will call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. We move to item number two. Which is discussion and possible direction, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into discussion and possible direction regarding election functions and duties potentially being transferred to the county recorder.
I have a motion and a second. Now for discussion. I want to say that since two board members asked that this be on the agenda, that's why it's on the agenda, so I'm going to lean on them to give their reasons for wanting it on the agenda and why they want to make this change.
I'll start. So, there's been quite a lot of interest in possibly doing something different with our elections, and I know there's people that are very, you know, think opposite, but that's part of being a democracy, as you all say, we're trying to keep our open dialogue here, we're trying to get new ideas and bring things about. The, in my speaking with the county recorder for the last many years, not just since we started this in September, and my well recognition is that they, he does do a lot of the election work. If you look in the statutes in Title sixteen, the county recorder is listed hundreds of times as being in charge of elections. Sometimes it says county recorder or person in charge of elections, and sometimes it says Board of Supervisors or person in charge of elections. But for the most part, the county recorder is statutorily recognized as a person who is responsible or could be responsible for much of the election process. And right now, we do not have, unfortunately, we do not have an election director. Having been a personal friend of Ms. Mara, that this whole, since September, has been very difficult. I felt like we could have talked through things and that we weren't given that opportunity. I do know that if we gave the job, whatever portion of the job we give to the county recorder, which I only picture us asking him to take his role where recorder is listed, and to oversee an assigned someone to be in charge of elections. When that happens, he won't really be taking any of the board's responsibilities, in my opinion. He will be taking the role that he is legally required, and it is in the statute that he take. There will be a few things that the Board of Supervisors will need to remain responsible for, but basically, he would hire the elections director rather than us, that's what I picture. And also run the elections office. And I could see that being a smooth transition, especially right now where we are in the middle of a transition. So, that's all I have to say for now.
Do you realize, Ms. Judd, that with the laws that you stated, that counties have tried this in the past, and there's not a single county in Arizona that has the elections under the recorder?
I realize that. And I didn't get the details about when they've tried it in the past, but the statutes do not, do not state that it is not possible. And I feel like the recorder, you know, one of the things I'm hearing is that the recorder's a Republican, so obviously, then it's going to be a political office. Well, the recorder handles a whole lot of election things in a very fair manner. He isn't, he can't be a Republican when he handles elections, and he knows that. And my discussions with him have been very clear on that. He states the law to me quite often. So, I know that there's different thoughts on that, and we'll hear them today, and I'm prepared to hear them, but I see it as it's a lot easier to replace a county recorder than to replace a Board of Supervisors. If he's overseeing it, the, the, both sides have a chance of having a recorder. For instance, we had a Democrat recorder for a long, long time before we had David Stevens. So, but I would trust any recorder, no matter where they come from, what political background, would treat elections fairly. So whether it's under the direction of the board or under the direction of the recorder. I just don't know why it couldn't work.
Doesn't matter that the counties have tried this and then said, no, that doesn't work?
Well, I would like to have, all I was told was counties have tried it. I don't have the details on any of them, and I am not sure if that could be shared today, I would be really happy to hear the details why it didn't work. And I think Mr. Stevens should have a chance to do this, to have this duty. And right now, I think it simplifies things in the process. So, that's.
Do you have any comments?
Certainly.
Go ahead.
First of all, Madam Chair, you are on the, what I call the bandwagon fallacy, which says that since no other county does this, that we shouldn't do it either. Continuing. The subject of placing the elections director under the county recorder in the course of the last two years or so, I have repeated my viewpoint, that county government is not properly organized. I have repeatedly quoted this primary section of the county supervisors' ARSs, eleven two fifty-one, Powers of the Board. The Board of Supervisors, under such limitations and restrictions as are prescribed by law, may supervise the official conduct of all county officers and officers of all districts and other subdivisions of the county, charged with assessing, collecting, safekeeping, managing, or dispersing the public revenues, see that officers faithfully perform their duties in direct prosecutions for delinquencies, and when necessary, require the officers to renew their official bonds, make reports, present their books, and account for inspections. And that's sixty-seven paragraphs, that's only the first one. The current condition of abdication of executive authority by the Board of Supervisors by insertion of the position of county administrator, in spite of that position not existing in the ARSs, and the ambiguity and lack of specificity of the duties of the county administrator, which I have looked at back to about nineteen ninety-eight or so with the different job descriptions, and I'm not going to go into the different paragraphs since everybody does not have that. So, the county administrative position does not exist in the ARSs, but the county recorder position without question exists in the ARSs. The statutes for the county recorder in Title nineteen are much narrower in scope than those of the county supervisors and much more closely related to elections. Therefore, the county elections director should be under the county recorder instead of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have several people who wish to speak. Some are on Teams and some are in person. The first one is on Teams, Joan Murphy. Are you available, Joan?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
All right. Basically, I am opposed to this agenda item. The two supervisors in question, and David Stevens, have done damage to our election process, as I see it. You two, Judd and Crosby, have dishonored your oath. You don't listen to counsel. You have, because of the things that you have proposed and then tried to run with, you've cost us over, well over a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. You have never apologized to the public, and have not followed through on your promises, as was stated by Allison earlier, to pay your way for these shenanigans. You almost wound up having our votes go uncounted. Supervisor Crosby defied a judicial order and did not certify the election results. This caused us the loss of a very good elections director who served honorably for many years, and who was only attempting to secure our votes. You came up with a plan, but you didn't have the basics, the security. And the fact that David Stevens was well willing to go along with this without being, having a process to move the votes, secure our ballots, anything, it just shows me that he doesn't belong taking over these duties, he already has a full-time job. And I'm just waiting for all of you to face the consequences of the chaos that you have sown. As far as I'm concerned, you do not belong in office and shouldn't have a say over what will happen. You are a threat to our very democracy, and I thank you for my time.
The next speaker is Diane Davidson, on Teams also, are you there Diane?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead, you have three minutes.
I speak today to the inadvisability and hazards of illegally transferring election oversight, including ballot design, security, and tabulation from a nonpartisan employee to the county recorder David Stevens. Mr. Stevens is an elected partisan who has conspired with election deniers, especially Mark Fincham, to sow doubt within the Cochise County electorate about election integrity. Mind you, he has done this despite full-throated endorsement of election integrity as practiced under Lisa Mara's direction in twenty twenty. Although acknowledging that Trump lost the twenty twenty election, Stevens recently jumped on the bandwagon of doubters like Peggy Judd, who was at the Capitol on January sixth, Robert Montgomery, a fake elector, and Tom Crosby, who illegally refused to certify my vote and yours for the twenty twenty election. What has changed for Mr. Stevens in recent times? Could it be the fact that he is considering running for Congress or U.S. Senate and needs to court Arizona's MAGA minions to boost his prospects, even it seems at the expense of our democracy? Nonpartisan employees are not subject to the political pressures inherent in running for office. I urge you in the strongest possible terms to table the proposed transfer of authority in favor of having a temporary team headed by the one remaining employee in the elections director's office, handle the relatively simple May election, and then advertise for Lisa Mara's replacement over the longer term. Consolidation of Ms. Mara's responsibilities with those of the recorder's office would represent a significant and very worrisome step toward authoritarianism and fascism. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kristi Brown, and I see that Kristi is in person. To come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and you have three minutes, Kristi.
Kristi Brown, Sierra Vista, a county resident in Supervisor District Two. I spoke in October twenty twenty-two in support of Lisa Mara, as I have worked early boards for logic and accuracy testing, and as a poll observer. In light of Agenda Item Two, I hope to convey my opposition to any transfer of election duties to the county recorder. As an aide in your decision, I'm sharing the job descriptions for both positions. The county recorder performs two essential functions, processing documents primarily related to real estate transactions, excuse me, and maintaining voter registration records for all jurisdictions within the county, performing related responsibilities as statutorily required, elected for four years. The election director position prepares, administers, and conducts federal, state, and local elections in accordance with, and not limited to, the Arizona revised statutes, the Secretary of State's Procedure Manual, the Help America Vote Act, and other applicable laws and regulations. The department also provides contract election services, assistance to cities within the county, and special districts. To professionally perform the duties of Election Department with integrity, a spirit of innovation, accessibility, transparency, and efficient use of taxpayer resources while emphasizing outstanding customer service, maintaining professional election standards. The director is an appointed nonpartisan official who reports to the county administrator. You must possess an election officer certificate issued by our Secretary of State, or successfully complete the Arizona State Election Certification Program at the next available training. I see little similarities in these job descriptions. I hope you will advertise for a qualified election director promptly, and keep the only trained employee in the Election Department. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Druckman, and I don't see Teams, so is Jennifer in person? Your name, address, and you have three minutes, Jennifer.
My name's Jennifer Druckman, I live in Bisbee, Arizona. The public is demanding to know and has the right to know how we could be in a position where an elected official, county recorder David Stevens, who has no business interfering in the election process, and who boldly participated in an attempt to interfere in the most recent midterm election, is now being handed responsibilities of the election director, particularly after he and the two Republican Board of Supervisors threatened and intimidated and almost sued Lisa Mara to the point that she had to resign. I would like to ask the county attorney how this move can be stopped? How is it legal for a county recorder to take over Lisa Mara's job duties? And beyond that, I would like to know if it seems likely that the Secretary of State would be willing to certify him as an election official? Because he has certainly not seemed to be qualified, and has not demonstrated that he's trustworthy to carry out the laws of the state of Arizona. According to ARS sixteen dash four oh seven, Section B, the Secretary of State should provide for the examination of applicants for elections office or certificates. The Secretary of State may not issue a certificate for an election officer to a person who has not demonstrated to this satisfaction that the person is competent to perform the work of an election officer. Recorder Stevens, who was told in uncertain terms by the judge that his schemes for a hundred percent hand count was illegal, and yet he persisted? And now the Board of Supervisors, who is also sued and found in violation of election law, is going to install him in our elections office? When Mr. Stevens was asked if he supports getting rid of the county's tabulations machines, he said, quote, "I'm willing to have that debate." What? I think this situation needs a state-level intervention, and I'll be contacting the Arizona Attorney General, the Secretary of State, the Governor's Office, and asking them to intervene. And I encourage anyone who has concerns about this to do the same thing. Recorder Stevens has proven that he's part of the crazy conspiracy crowd, and there's no place for that. And as our Secretary of State Adrian Fontes takes it one step further, these new American fascists, the MAGA Republicans, you call them denialists, we need to call them out for who they are. We have to attack this terrorism directly because it is an attack on our democracy. Thank you.
Next person is James Knox. James, you give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
James Knox, Queen Creek, Arizona, Cause of America State Lead, Arizona Chapter. I'd like to encourage you to do exactly this move. What we have going on here in this county and many other counties is a divisiveness, a pointing fingers of who's responsible for what. By moving the elections underneath the recorder, it stops all that. It puts one person responsible for everything. It, the buck stops with him, and the buck stops with you to ensure that the elections occur flawlessly, and allows that bickering to be no more. We've heard a lot of divisive talk here, pointing at parties, but you got to remember, as an elected official, and you as elected officials, you represent people, citizens, R, D, I, and even those that choose not to participate in the process. It doesn't matter, once you're elected, you have to look and represent the people. And one day, the recorder could be a Democrat. Would that matter then? Would that make it suddenly all right? I beg not. So not only would I encourage you to make this bold move, that is done in many other states and many other counties in those states, but also encourage you to look at further actions that could help secure the elections and ensure that the counts are right, like getting rid of the machines. Look at exploring, if you're involved in Eric, removing from it. Both of these acts cost the taxpayers a lot of money that could restore funding to where it needs to go, into the citizens' hands, reduce taxes, and ensure that your elections can, will move forward in a positive manner where you know that the elections occur accurately. Thank you.
The next person is Kathy DeBolt. First your name, and then you have three minutes, Kathy.
My name is Kathy DeBolt, and I'm from Sierra Vista, Arizona, and I would like to support this move by the Board of Directors. I really didn't appreciate people saying, because people would want to do this, or even want to do a hand count, that we're fascist or that we're terrorists. I don't think, I was very resentful of what this lady had to say, and that it's in the record. I don't think that people who are supporting hand counts or supporting this move are necessarily terrorists, and I really do think that that was an awful thing to say. I've served in the military for twenty-eight and a half years, I'm still working for the government. I think that it's important for all of us to have confidence that our votes were really where they were. And a hand count or moving in a position under someone else doesn't remove the duties of that position. It just means that they're supervised by someone else. That position, that duty position is still the same. That person will run elections, but they'll just be supervised by the recorder. I see no reason that we couldn't do that. In the end, the buck stops with the Board of Supervisors. They're going to have to certify, they're going to have to look at what is done. And moving that position under the recorder doesn't change the duties that that person will be doing. So there's no reason that they couldn't be under the recorder. And as James said earlier, Mr. Knox, that that person could at some point be a Democrat if that's what we, the people, want. That's what we voted for. So I don't see, I really support this move, I think that it's a good thing, and I think that having that, that person will still be an appointed person, they'll still be there forever, how long it has to be, it's just that they'll be under the recorder. So I don't, I don't understand why that elections official couldn't work under the recorder as a supervisor. Thank you, ma'am.
Next person is Jeff Sturgis, in person. Jeff, your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jeff Sturgis, and I am from Sierra Vista, and I think the two previous speakers just ignored a lot of the stuff that we should be learning. Supervisors Crosby and Judd, you know what many citizens of Cochise County now know about the damage you and recorder David Stevens have done to our county. Not only have you cost the taxpayers over a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees by your illegal antics, jeopardized over forty thousand of our votes, most of them Republican, and caused national embarrassment to our county, but you have also driven our superb county elections director out of office. You have forced her to resign due to harassment and threats to herself and her family because she refused to do your illegal bidding. Now that you have gotten rid of Lisa Mara, you propose transferring her election authority to David Stevens, who has recently been exposed for his role in all of this, among other things, has colluded with those election-denying conspiracy spotters from Maricopa County. Citizens and voters in Cochise County need to know what this is all about, an unethical, if not illegal, move to destroy our election process and take control over our right to have our votes count. There is a robust effort to recall you, Tom Crosby. I personally know many Republicans who have signed the recall petition, and many more who will sign before this is all over. Thank God that they have seen through the scheme cooked up by you, Judd, and Stevens. They care about the expense you have saddled us with as taxpayers, and the other damage the three of you have caused our county. Perhaps as the Herald Review has urged, Cochise County voters have looked in the mirror and have seen that voting for just any Republican is not in their best interest. There is, however, another Republican sitting on the dais to whom voters need to pay attention. Our county administrator, Richard Karwaxka, has recently filed papers to run as Superior Court Judge. Court Judge, Division IV. Now, it has seemed to me while watching the unethical and often illegal antics of supervisors Crosby and Judd, along with those of recorder Stevens, that Mr. Karwaxka has conducted himself professionally, ethically, and within the letter of the law. Nonetheless, voters should know that he is at this very moment in a position to reveal to county citizens and voters that he, as a public official, will stand up for the rule of law and for common decency. If Tom Crosby and Peggy Job vote to follow through with his attempt to transfer election authority to election denier Stevens after forcing our election director resign...
Your time is up.
You could do the right thing. Thanks.
The next speaker in person, Joseph Patterson. I'm sorry, are you online, Joseph?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You have three minutes, your name, address, and three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Joseph Patterson from Sierra Vista, Arizona, and the abrupt departure of our former elections director has left the county elections department without a qualified, without qualified leadership at this critical moment in time. The board's authority to conduct canvass and certify elections is currently under legal assault and challenge, and there's no leadership within the elections department at this moment. The county also has an election scheduled in May. As I see it, there is an urgent need for leadership in the elections department. Leadership capable of working with the board in the areas of concern and also the ability to steer the elections department effectively through these complex times. I'm thankful that there is someone who is willing and able to step into this position immediately and satisfy this need without skipping a beat. Our recorder, David Stevens, is currently certified by the Secretary of State as an elections officer-director. He is qualified to immediately assume duties as the elections director and officer. If called upon, Mr. Stevens has graciously agreed to assume these duties...
Duties.
... on an interim basis. He is not seeking this position or these duties. He is of service. Mr. Stevens has been a man of impeccable integrity, enormous capability, and a heart for serving people his entire life. I would heartily endorse the appointment of Mr. Stevens as the county's interim elections officer and director, while the board searches for and recruits a new elections director and officer. As for structure, as to whether or not the new elections director should fall within the purview of the county recorder, to me personally, it seems to make sense as there's so much overlap between the two offices, and unity is consistent with...
Lisa Braderman on Teams. Lisa, are you on Teams? Lisa Braderman. Okay, we'll move on.
Madam Chair, I do see that she's on Teams. It looks like she's muted currently.
Lisa, you're muted. Can you unmute if you want to speak? Lisa, if you can hear me, we know that you are muted. If you want to speak, you must unmute. I'm sorry, I'll have to move on. Next one is Stephanie Stevenson on Teams.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear?
Give your name, address, and three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Stevenson, and I am from St. David. I oppose this action. David Stevens was elected for the position of recorder with very specific duties. It seems to me if those duties are exceeded or modified, the county is going to need to hold a new election for this new position because David Stevens was not elected for these expanded powers. This is a politically motivated power grab, pure and simple. It has breach of ethics written all over it. First, the three people involved, two who will make this decision, Judd and Crosby, as well as reporter Stevens, are possibly implicated in harassing our former election director out of her job. Yet these same three are poised to swoop in and usurp the duties and powers of that job. It's not a good look. Also, last fall, these same three showed us that they hold fringe beliefs about elections. Now, they, and that they were willing to defy the law to push those beliefs onto county voters. Now, they had an opportunity to argue their beliefs in court, and they argued at length about not trusting voting by mail, not trusting drop boxes or machines, and how they were so qualified to do 100% hand counting. And yet, if you look at the decision process, the windows, their actions taken were wholly without jurisdiction and void. Mr. Crosby refers to 16602B, and yet he had a chance to argue about that in court, and repeatedly they were, they lost. On every point, they lost. Illegal, illegal, harms the voter. The office of the elections director was the only firewall protecting the voters and our vote during the 2022 election. If you dissolve this firewall, you are putting the county onto a path of further litigation, chaos, and harming our future elections. So I, I ask that you not take us down this road again.
The next speaker is on Teams, Steve Marlett.
Hi, this is Steve. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but you're a little muffled. Maybe you're too close to the speaker.
All right. Now, Steve Marlett, Wilcox, Arizona. I am opposed to the motion proposed today. As Director English has mentioned, no county in Arizona currently does this, even though other counties have tried, and there's a definite reason for this. Are we really going to go and think that we're superior to these other counties in their reasoning and what their results have been, and we're just going to do this without further fully researching why it didn't work with the other counties? That seems quite foolish. The second, we've already shown so far that the county is losing in their efforts to try to change election policy. We've lost court cases and fines based on the actions that the county is currently doing, or we can continue down this path. That seems really poor. Number three, this is not in the recorder's job. We're trying to say, oh, we could do this. Yes, if we were in a true emergency where we had no other choices whatsoever, we could potentially do it. I don't think we're in that situation. Director Mara did not leave just because she was tired of the job. She left because of continually being not allowed to do her job. Please don't make that mistake when you go forward. Find another elections director who can be an unbiased voice for all of the people, not just for partisan politics, and that is what the voters need. Fair and unbiased elections are at the heart of democracy. To continually tinker with this system that has the support of the vast, vast majority of the voters in the county, this will be disastrous, beginning to people saying that, well, elections don't matter anymore because they're so tampered with, they're so biased, that it doesn't matter. Please do not continue along this path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is on Teams, and it's Allison Morris. Are you, are you there, Allison?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have, give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Allison Morris from Portal, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in opposition to this item. The resignation of elections director Lisa Mara was a terrible blow to this entire county and especially to those who value well-run and ethical elections. The hundreds of letters, emails, and phone calls Ms. Mara received attest to the fact that she was well-respected and deeply appreciated by an overwhelming majority of Cochise County citizens. Her political affiliation had nothing to do with her job. Director Mara followed the law and did what she felt was right under the most difficult workplace conditions, harassment threats, and a personal lawsuit. Her record was impeccable, and her work was of highest standards. Ms. Mara's resignation was a direct reaction to the misconduct of Mr. Crosby, Ms. Judd, and Mr. Stevens. They should publicly apologize for her for so badly mistreating such a distinguished colleague. Recorder Stevens does not have the experience, expertise, or ethics to assume the responsibility of Director Mara. Even after a judge ruled that the 100% hand count audit was unlawful, Mr. Stevens eagerly helped to push it forward. It took yet another legal intervention to persuade him to stop, reminding him that he would be in contempt of that court order if he did not. Like Mr. Crosby and Ms. Judd, Mr. Stevens has proven to be untrustworthy, and his extreme partisanship is not compatible with the elections department. What is needed now is the swift but careful search for a qualified nonpartisan director and staff person to replace Ms. Mara and Ms. Martha Rodriguez. What we do not need is more upset in county elections by assigning new duties to Mr. Stevens. We need stability and trust. Table this item until you are able to fill Ms. Mara's position, allowing enough time for that person to come up to speed before the May 16 election for the jail district taxed. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fred Miller in person. You'd come to the microphone, please, and give us your name, address, and you have
Good morning. My name is Fred Miller. I live in Bisbee. As a businessperson, I'm very dismayed by the agenda item. The three of you supervisors are charged with running basically a company with a budget of $250 million. Good business and government practices dictate that before making a major decision involving two departments, that research and options be examined along with possible consequences before making a decision. Where government and private companies part ways is that government is paid solely by taxpayers. It is our money that you are spending. For decisions such as what is proposed in this agenda item that affect us both financially and electorally, we have a right to see publicly what research has been done, what possibilities have been explored, how this will affect employees' work, what educated opinions have been rendered before you make this decision. That's how good government functions, and good business, I might add. None of this has taken place, according to this agenda item. You have placed an item for decision on the agenda without making any information available to the people who fund the government. It is imperative today to not take any action until all ramifications, including the cost of moving some or all elections oversight to the county recorder. There's no other Arizona county that has done this, and it's likely with good reason, probably financially. Sound fiscal management practices for running a government with a budget of more than $250 million dictate that a controversial action be presented to the public for our input before making a decision. That is not what's being done here. I urge you to table this discussion and present more alternatives regarding the election department. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joy Banks on Teams.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Last October, I researched whether any counties in Arizona used either their boards of supervisors or their county recorders as their elections directors. None of them do. Every county has a separate elections department that is overseen by a hired elections director with their county recorders fulfilling the same roles that ours does, maintaining the voter registration roles, sending out mail-in ballots, et cetera. I noticed that Yavapai County listed their elections director position as vacant, so I called them and spoke to Mr. Matt Mortolero to find out if this meant there would be changes to how Yavapai handled their elections. He told me their former elections director had moved out of state, and they were looking for another one, and that in the meantime, their county administrator was serving in that role, and current staff was covering the upcoming November election. They were not changing up how their elections department functioned or moving it under their county recorder. Mr. Mortolero was confident they had the upcoming election covered, and apparently they did, as there were no problems that I know of. Mr. Karwaxka and supervisors, I am asking you why you feel it is a suitable thing for Cochise County to move its entire elections department under the county recorder, when no other county in the state operates like that? I do not know the history of how or why Arizona counties establish separate elections departments that are run by hired elections director, but I can guess that a big part is to keep elective officials from being directly involved in the counting of ballots. I am not in favor of the supervisors voting to approve this action. I expect Mr. Karwaxka to step in and take direction of the elections department until such time as we have a new elections director. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Kim Depew in person. Kim Depew.
Give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Yes, ma'am. Kim Depew, 5357 South Laguna, Sierra Vista, Arizona. There seems to be a real fear of change here. I don't know why that is. Our recently resigned elections director reassured us that the elections she supervised were accurate, and our concerns to the contrary were just ridiculous. Therefore, as our legitimately elected officials, you have the right to make organizational changes as you see fit. The trend in elections has been toward digital for decades. Although technology is remarkably helpful, errors can occur through accidental and intentional acts. I had no idea what that barcode told the tabulator the day I voted. Supervision of this ever-changing political and election landscape should include a careful response to challenges. Recent attempts at citizen overview and investigation were met with such furious resistance that county officials were cast into chaos. The Board of Supervisors should not allow an elections director to dictate to them. The Board of Supervisors, I'm sorry, you have an opportunity now to put a more responsive and flexible organization in place. The National Voter Registration and the Help America Vote Acts of '93 and '02 funneled a lot of money into technology to help states and counties become more efficient. However, these two important acts were careful not to eliminate the use of traditional paper-based processes during elections. From a budget standpoint, a couple of well-paid employees could replace the highly-paid elections administrator. Non-elected administrators should not compete with our elected officials for control. Decentralization is a founding feature of our elections. One size does not fit all. The assumption by staff that the jail ballot should be mail-only should not have occurred. The supervisors should have discussed this before it went public. Today, you can take a step toward reestablishing full-body citizen participation by dismantling the elections department concentration of power here in Cochise County, and I thank you.
The next speaker is Kato Daly. Your name, address, and you have three minutes, Kato.
Kato Daly, Bisbee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know the old adage, don't let the fox guard the chicken
You know the old adage, "Don't let the fox guard the chicken coop." Well, that's exactly what would happen if the county recorder was given the county Elections Director responsibilities. The current recorder is not nonpartisan. He's a good friend of and is a director for an organization run by former candidate for Arizona Secretary of State Mark Fincham, called Election Fairness Institute. Fincham doesn't recognize our current President of the United States, Joe Biden. He thinks the election was rigged. As reported by Jen Feifield in her excellent article in Vote Beat, "How David Stevens Is Making Cochise County a Laboratory for Election Skepticism", our current recorder defended our county's 2020 elections, saying, "I tell people that I don't believe we had any issues in Cochise County whatsoever, yet." Without the current recorder's behind-the-scenes machinations in illegally counting votes and leading on two supervisors with his naive gumption, Cochise County's 2022 elections would never have turned into a morass of chaos, legal suits, court hearings, national and international headlines, threats of jail for two county supervisors, costing county residents over $100,000 in unnecessary legal fees, and a recall on one speaker. Our recorder could have defended our Elections Director and our election process, like he did in 2020, but he's gotten into the wrong group of people. Who is he supporting? Conspiracy theorists? Or the fair election process and the good people of Cochise County? And now you want to have this partisan fox overseeing our election process? This agenda item needs to be tabled. This is a very serious situation requiring an in-depth, mature, and thoughtful discussion and legal vetting. Table it. Explore other options. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Catherine Welch, I believe, in person.
Good morning. Catherine Welch, Bisbee, Arizona. First off, I want to say I agree with everyone who is in opposition to appointing Stevens as the Elections Director. So, everything that's already been said, ditto on that. I also want to say, happy birthday, Arizona. My family has been living in Cochise County continuously since before Arizona was a state. My family came here when, when Arizona was a territory, and they settled in Cochise County. Crosby and Judd and Stevens have brought so much shame, embarrassment, humiliation to Arizona. We're a laughingstock. People who are ethical all over the country laugh at us because we have Board of Supervisors who have no use for the rule of law. They will oppose it, try to go around it, no use for facts, and it, and this is... These words came out of their mouth. It's, "I'm not making this up." It's like you can look back at the receipts of what they said. We've heard them say, one of them in particular, that it doesn't matter how many facts you give that person, that they are likely to disregard it, and, "Well, I'm just going to try it anyway." Absolutely bad judgment. I, you know, it's... That's the kind of judgment that you get from middle schoolers who think that they know more than adults. It's, no, it's like you're, you're not telling me what to do. I'm going to do what I'm going to do. The, you know, all of, all of these actions that, that they have done with their election denying and move towards, towards authoritarian rule have cost Cochise County a lot of money, and it will cost more because we're losing economic opportunities because who would want to come to Arizona and do business with people that have no regard for the rule of law? And this needs to be tabled. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Ann Carl in person. You come to the microphone. You have three minutes. Name and address.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ann Carl, and I live in Bisbee, Arizona. And I, well, what she said, she did a great job just now. I am also concerned about, and in opposition to this agenda item. Ms. Judd, with all due respect, your premise that Mr. Stevens does not inject partisanship into the process of elections is wrong. As I'm sure you know, he appeared on national television to defend the Cyber Ninjas Audit, so-called audit, where in, um, some of the people there brought in black markers to this audit space. Mr. Stevens has also, as, as you know, violated the law along with you and Mr. Crosby in terms of following election law. He has also provided no plan regarding this ballot grant that, for a million dollars that he was given. I believe the money is supposed to be spent by April. No one's really sure what, what he's doing with that. So, in terms of competency, in terms of common sense, in terms of integrity, he is not someone who can conduct a nonpartisan election, and he has demonstrated that time and time again. He sits as the director of Mark Fincham's nonprofit, which, as we know, is radically not nonpartisan. Again, in the spirit of Statehood Day, in the spirit of Valentine's Day, I ask you to show the love for our democracy and table this. There are options such as Ms. Mara coming back, such as others in the state who can do this, such as Dan Vertrees, who I understand is very competent. Those who know him have told me he has a lot of integrity. These are people who won't inject partisanship into our election process. It is precious to us, and we urge you to do the right thing here. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Al Anderson in person. If you would come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Al Anderson. I live in Bisbee. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Uh, I am opposed to transferring all election matters to the Recorder's Office. The Elections Department should remain independent from all other departments. Considering the last very expensive and illegal election debacle created by Stevens, Crosby, and Judd, I think that the farthest the three can personally separate themselves from Cochise County's voting process, the better, because they can no longer be trusted to represent county voters and taxpayers' best interests. Also, considering that you, uh, with the exception of Supervisor Ann English, just personally attacked Lisa Mara, who has worked tirelessly and unbiased for years with a lawsuit, I think it is predictable that you'll try to fill Election Department positions with a bunch of bias-based election deniers. All I can say is shame. Shame on you. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Kara Harris. I suppose in person. I don't see teams. Okay. Do you come forward and give us your name and address? You'll have three minutes, Kara.
I'm Kara Harris. I'm from Wettstone, and I'm support, in support of item number two. But I'd like to say, since we no longer recite the Pledge of Allegiance, I feel a need to remind people we are a constitutional republic, Ms. Carl, not a democracy. I was fortunate enough to grow up with a dad who was born to an immigrant escaping communism in Serbia. Even though my grandfather escaped and fled to what was a free country, he returned to his communist roots in the American Communist Party. This term is definitely an oxymoron. My dad and grandfather could, fought a lot, as my father could not understand my grandfather's return to his bleak attachments to a party of enslavement. He raised us to identify and understand communism, its relative socialism, all the while Nazis were brought to teach our teachers and our universities. This was a recipe for recycling communism backslash socialism in our free world. Now we are viewing the results in this century as America has become permeated with this oppressive theology of enslavement. Welcome to America 20.23. Most people can't identify this cancer as they've been educated right out of their mentality of freedom. Too few see the threat of the federal, feral government out of control. My gain was an education at the knee of my dad, Bill Stefanoff. Little did I know, as he went on, sometimes ad nauseam, I was getting an education of survival. Today, I'm glad I'm his daughter. I can't be fooled by the lies that circulate around me and the amount of stupid wanting to return the control to the federal government. When our Board of Supervisors voted two to one to give control of our health care to the federal government via the CDC, I was woke up to a battle, the ignorance of this choice. I didn't want to be political, but at this point, I became so. In the next month, you will be looking at and deciding on how corrupt our voting system will be handled. We, the people, will be watching you closely. We will watch and see how you treat the very freedoms the veterans in this room fought for and died for. We, the people, are grateful for one board member, Mr. Crosby, who respects our Constitution. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Sandra Clark in person. You come to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Give us your name and address. I see you have three minutes.
So I'm Sandra Clark. I live in Green Valley, Arizona, and I thank you for the opportunity. I'm, needless to say, I'm opposed to this hostile takeover of our democracy. There's nothing short, you can't describe it any other way. You probably believe in minority rule, like the Federalist Society instructs the Supreme Court to be. We believe as Democrats, and this is the republic, but it's a democratic republic, in majority rule. With the majority here, if you just take a sample, are against your proposal, Mr. Crosby. And Ms. Judd, I need to tell you that you don't know what is in Lisa Mara's head. She did not want to leave. She had to leave. And she, when she left, her resignation was conditional. She was willing to return if in two weeks you could correct the situation so she could survive it. You did nothing, drug repeat, and here we are today to say this is final. Shame on you. When a job becomes vacant, in America, you advertise the job, and you have competition for it. You do research and you find the best possible candidates. You don't put a plant like Mr. Stevens. And let me tell you, not only is he not qualified for this position, he's a lazy guy. And the reason I'm saying that to you, Mr. Stevens, because I read your grant. You're a sham of a grant, which I'll be determined that you never see that billion dollars. You never, can you ever, have you ever heard of a grant for a million dollars that you don't provide the budget for? Have you ever heard of it? A million dollars to do a lot for our public education in Cochise County. You, sir, are a lazy guy, and you should never have control of our election because the elections, the freedom of free elections, is the cornerstone of our democracy. And as a proud, American, patriotic American, I will die for it before you become in control. Thank you very much.
Please, please, no, no. Uh, I also have several speaker request forms of people who wish not to speak but wish their numbers to be noted in the record, as there are nineteen who are opposed to Agenda Item Number Two and one in favor.
I have some responses to some of the comments, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay. Number one, Mr. Stevens is qualified for the position, as noted by Dr. Jo. Number two, this case that was referred to by Ms. Stevenson is on appeal and has not been settled. Number three, for Diane Davidson, the allegation that I illegally refused to certify December 1st, 2022, the attorney for the board removed the case to federal court. The constituents' issue is the voting machines. The voting machines, the laws and regulations for accreditation of voting machines in question are in federal law. The case would have been heard better in federal court, in my opinion. Mr. Steve Martlet, in my opinion, this issue was an emergency, and I submitted a, a emergency document wanting to get this done before today, and it was not, it was not forwarded that way. Ms. Allison Morris, again. Ms. Judd and I voted for a statutory hand count of all precincts, a minimal statutory hand count of all precincts, according to ARS 16602B on October 24th, 2022, not a full hand count. Joy Banks, the county administrative position does not exist in the ARSs. Therefore, it is better, in my opinion, to have it under the county recorder, which does obviously exist, and I mentioned that in my, my previous comments. We do have the right to make these changes as a Board of Supervisors, and if, that is, if we meet resistance from our county attorney, we should retain outside counsel again. Ms. Sandra Clark, the Constitution doesn't say we're a democratic republic, Article Four, Section Four. That concludes my comments at this time, Madam. But, but wait.
No, calm, calm down, calm down.
Mr. Maddox, do you happen to have a copy of the motion, which I have in my hand here, because I wanted to add to it? If, if you could put that up on the big board, I'd be glad to wait for it, or I could read it.
Supervisor Crosby, I did not have that ready to display.
Okay. Well, we do have a couple sample motions, and I'm just going to read the one that, that I propose.
Well, if, we already have a motion on the floor. Ms. Judd made a motion so that we could have this discussion.
What, which motion was it? Was it number one?
It was a motion to, for discussion and possible direction. I think there's still conversation happening at this point in time.
Okay, we need to get down to the...
This is the, uh, this is the, this is what I'm talking about, and this is not on the agenda. So, the, the motion for the agenda item has been made.
Right. That's correct.
Didn't you, didn't you expect to make motions about this or not?
No, but...
I expect to stick with the agenda. The agenda says that we're going to do discussion and possible direction. So now the board needs to settle down and say, if you want to move functions and responsibilities to the recorder, what would that look like on paper? Because we can't do it verbally. Everything we do has to be done in writing. So now we need to get down to the point of your expectations, Ms. Judd's expectations of what we would put in a contract or an IGA with the recorder. And we need to stop and think, are we doing this for all the administrative work? You plan on giving him the responsibilities of the board also? Or are you going to retain that for the board?
I don't expect to break any laws.
Okay. Can I, can I make a comment? And I, and I'm not in an ideal situation. My husband's now in the doctor, so now I'm kind of on the sidewalk. So can you hear me well?
I can hear you, Ms. Judd.
Okay. So, I would like to follow the statute word for word, letting the recorder do everything that the recorder is statutorily allowed to do. And when it says, "Or person assigned to oversee elections", I want that assigned person to, for now, be under the recorder. But I do anticipate, and actually, I'm not against the board hiring the new Elections Director or being in on the hiring, but I do think that if we're going to give the recorder an added amount of responsibility, that he would hire the Elections Director and that they would... would hire the elections director and that they would oversee, that he would oversee the elections department, and like I said before, fairly, he would oversee it fairly. He, he, he doesn't did his own work at this point. He was supporting the board. He will, he will have a little bit of liberty, but his job as a recorder is unbiased, unpolitical. He doesn't bring that into the election work. And I would suppose he would hire a really good person that would do the same.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just to guide this discussion and actually inform the audience, this agenda item is for discussion and possible direction. So there will be no vote today as to any kind of agreement. Now, based on this proposal to have this discussion, which was brought by Supervisor Crosby and Supervisor Judd, there were documents that I examined. The previous counties that have attempted this was Maricopa County and Coconino County. And so now we have to have a discussion if the board still wants to proceed in this manner. And to draft an agreement, an agreement needs to be drafted, an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement. Currently, the structure is the board has delegated the administrative and managerial functions of elections to the county administrator. That is lawful for the board to do. During this discussion, and I need some clarification regarding this agreement, is the first question, does the board intend to transfer the administrative and managerial functions of elections to the recorder's office? Or is the board attempting to take their statutorily obligated duties and give those to the recorder's office? So that, I think, is the first point of conversation.
Okay. And when do you expect to have a complete conversation about that issue? Soon?
This is, this is the opportunity for discussion and possible direction.
Yesterday, you told me that we weren't going to vote today. And that's, okay. This says sample motions, sample motions precede votes. Why does it say sample motions?
Those are sample motions that you got, that the board may or may not put forward. So the agenda item is for discussion and direction so a conversation can happen in open public so that these details can be known to the public about what would be in this agreement, what the board's direction wants to happen. So the conversation about the agreement and any possible direction has to be done here in an open meeting, and that's what the agenda item.
Tell me why there's two agenda items, and do you expect both of these to be discussed or just one of them chosen or what?
Those are sample motions. That's not an agenda item. The agenda items are listed and were posted by the clerk of the board in front of you right now. So the second agenda item that we're under is discussion and possible direction regarding elections. However, the board during this discussion does not, does not want to proceed and does not want to go forward on this, there is no motion to be made. However, during this discussion, if you still want to proceed as a board, the majority of the board wants to proceed in this direction, then we have to be clear about what the transfer would be and these terminologies. Then the sample motion, if you choose to use it, you can use it as direction.
To vote on it?
Yes, to give direct direction and guidance to the staff.
Okay.
Because there is no agreement, there is no document here, this is discussion and possible direction.
Now, you just, you told me yesterday and you said today that we're not going to vote today, just, just now in the last minute, you said we are going to vote.
No, we're trying to put together the requirements of what we want in a document if you want to move forward.
You're not voting to transfer, you're voting to give direction to that. That is a vote.
Okay.
The discussion we had yesterday was, are we voting to transfer the power to the recorder today? Or today being the 14th? And I said, no, because the board has to give that direction, the board has to have a discussion in an open public meeting, and that's what we're having now.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just going to read motion number two, which you have here, and I want to add to it, and it would have been nice if it would have been on some, on the slide, but it isn't. So it says, this is not a motion, by the way, I'm talking about it, and I got to talk about what I want to add to it. I move we direct staff to prepare an agreement with the county recorder to delegate managerial authority for election-related responsibilities to the county recorder, set agreement to incorporate the provisions as agreed on today. Okay. So you're saying that there's more provisions that are not right here. Is that correct?
That's correct, that we still have to have discussions.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay. I would add after the words county recorder and that we appoint Mr. Stevens as interim elections director. I would add after the words county recorder and that we appoint Mr. Stevens as interim elections director. I'm sorry that that isn't as clear as I wish it would be, but anybody who wants to look at it can.
It seems like, maybe I'm getting picky here, but it sounds like that would be two different actions.
One, you're going to get two more motion or another motion.
One of them is to give direction to staff as to what to write as a document on what the responsibilities that you and Ms. Judd expect the recorder to take over is that, I think I heard Peggy say that it was all the statutory requirements, and you want to delegate the admin and managerial.
Right. Whatever is, is already written into the statute for the recorder or the person assigned to run elections, I would like the recorder to oversee that. However, I am completely a hundred percent on board to hire a new elections director and to restaff the elections office, but instead of.
So you would like to see in the document that the recorder would be in charge of hiring a new elections director?
Yes, and, but, but as mentioned in the meeting, I wouldn't mind being part of that decision. I think the board and the elections, and, and the recorder, but I would not feel uncomfortable if he hired the elections director and the staff, and it would be under his budget in his, his purview. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, if he hires the new elections director and he's running the elections, I, I think it, we need to put into the document, what kind of relationship would that have with us? Would we expect to get reports on the elections every so often? Or what, what's the relationship going to be between the recorder, elections department, and the board?
I, we only canvassed the elections. We also voted to set up the precincts where the locations were and such. Those are our duties. We never had specific reports on elections before, so whatever was typical, I would expect the same. Whatever our responsibilities are, we need to have that information. We need to see the tally, work through that and be prepared to canvass the election and whatever we need for that, I'm sure Mr. Stevens could provide just as well as Ms. Mara did, or the new director could provide just as well as Ms. Mara.
Okay, are you, are you writing this down?
I'm taking notes.
What might need to be in the document?
Yes, but just for clarification, so does the board want to transfer just the administrative and managerial functions to the recorder? And that would include determining whether there'd be an election director or hiring election director or hiring any kind of staffing needs. That would be transferred over to the recorder as that direction.
That's what I want.
Ms. Judd, did you hear that? Do you want all responsibilities given to the recorder? You, you indicated something about maybe you'd like to have something to say about the director?
If we can maintain that ability, yes, that would be good. Thank you.
I didn't understand what you said, Madam Judd.
Could you repeat it? It was.
If we were to partner with the recorder in the hiring of the elections director, I think that would be a good thing. I think he should have a say, or maybe it would be us hiring it and the recorder partnering in on the hiring.
Which way would you like to have in the document?
Let's, let's. I prefer us hiring and the recorder having a say as he will be in our scenario, actually responsible for the actions in the, in the elections office rather than the board. But I like the idea of the board being able to hire the elections director. Now, other staffing in the office, I think that Mr. Stevens could do that on his own.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
How about language like recorder appoints, board approves?
Did you hear that, Ms. Judd? That wasn't what she said. She thought we should be.
The recorder would, would do the hiring or appointing, and then the board would approve. That's, that's good language.
So the establishment, just to be clear, minimum qualifications, posting for the position, interviews, that would all be done by the recorder's office, and then that position would then be presented to the board for approval?
Sounds good to me.
Yes, I approve of that.
I still want my addition into this language, whether it's a secondary motion or after the, the county recorder, that we appoint Mr. Stevens as interim elections director.
So if the agreement is to transfer the administrative and managerial functions of elections to the recorder's office, then there doesn't need to be a vote or discussion on an interim elections director because that would be the discretion of the recorder at that point. And the recorder can then determine what is needed. So that's where the board loses its power.
You said at that point, and we're not, we're, we're at this point, and that's why I'd rather do it right now, and there's no reason not to. Furthermore.
It's not on the agenda, so you can't appoint the elections director directly. Well, when you step off of the agenda, then I have to intervene.
Madam Chair, as I've stated before, ARS 11251 says, "Subject to other provisions of the law," the Board of Supervisors lays out what's going to happen. And so if there are other provisions of law that come into play, which there might be, then we're going to have to adjust this to the provisions of, of the law that are in place.
Madam Chair, if I may, it is not an agendized item today to appoint an interim elections director. You cannot vote on that today. That needs to be agendized, it needs to be properly noticed and then voted upon.
I think for clarification, what we, what the agenda item offered for us was the ability to discuss what you wanted on the relationship between the board and the county recorder as two elections, and what we need to put into the document. You need to understand, though, that the public and the board, that whatever we put into this document would have to be approved by the recorder. And so we can only submit, the recorder would have to accept that. So this is not a done deal today. It's simply a matter of us trying to figure out what to put in the document to satisfy the, the two board members who wish to move this direction. And then it will be up to another, a meeting, when it will be on the agenda, and it will have to have been run by the recorder, Mr. Stevens, before that. Because we can only offer, we can't know what he would accept. He may not accept any of these terms, or he may want more or less, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Note that this agenda item number two.
This paper is not on the agenda.
Instead, we're going to vote on it. This differs greatly from that in, in content and length. And since it differs in content and length, there is, I don't see any reason not to add to it.
Well, the, the agenda item says discussion and possible direction regarding election functions and duties potentially, potentially being transferred to the county recorder. So it doesn't indicate that we can do it now. It says potentially. So what we're trying to write down here and determine is what it is that you and Ms. Judd would like to have in a document that could then be presented to Mr. Stevens for his approval, and then it would go on the agenda for the board to approve.
Well, it is up to the, the board to decide whether we're going to vote on this or not, correct? We're going to vote on this today.
I'm not interested in voting on it. I think it was confusing that we were presented with agenda items, but that doesn't mean we have to vote on it today. I'm satisfied with where we are, and I believe that Mr. Stevens would, if we can come to an agreement with him, that the recorder will be in charge of deciding if there's an interim director or if he'll have someone hired or if he'll hire Dan. It, it's kind of up to him and at that point, if we make this decision and if it's agreeable with him. So I'm satisfied with not discussing an interim director or having a vote today.
That's fine.
Okay. So we still need to have further discussion about a potential agreement. Nothing can be voted on today. There is no agreement today. It's simply a discussion and direction. So the next question that I need information on is the length of the agreement. Agreements that are put into place have a termination date and extension. So is there a length of time that the board would recommend regarding a termination of this agreement?
No.
I, I think you can't, it would be not something that we should be doing, is to put into place something that would extend beyond our terms. So our.
Right.
In two years or, or less. And so I, I would be of the opinion that if, any, any document that we have that we are going to approve should only be during our term. Do you have, any board members have a problem with that?
I, I agree. And then with, with possible renewal in the January 2025, which would be the new board taking place.
See, that's, that's a detail that we don't have to vote on at this time, but it's what we need to put into documentation.
Now, the other thing is regarding termination of an agreement by either party. So either party can terminate from this agreement. Typically, there's a length of time associated with that termination of the agreement by either party. Now, this being an elections function, there should be a considerable amount of time given so that the public is aware of who is controlling or who is deciding election functions and processes. So the next question is the length of time. If either party wanted to terminate this agreement, what would the suggestion be?
The discretion of the board.
It needs to be in writing, in the document.
All, all of it's discretion of the board.
That is correct. That's why we're having a discussion now to determine that you're at the discretion of the board of what that is.
A future, a future board can do things completely different than what we.
This document doesn't go to a future board. This document is only good until our term ends.
No, there's lots of, lots of county ordinances that are years old, that are, that are, that we had nothing to do with. In fact, you just did one the other day when it came to a franchise agreement. You wanted to do it, it's something in the future.
It was for 25 years. What we're saying now is there needs to be a time in this. Peggy and I suggested that it be our, during our term. The next question is, if Mr. Stevens throws up his hands one day and says, I don't want to do this anymore, there needs to be in the document how much time he would have to give the board in order for us to be able to scramble and put elections back together. Or if all of a sudden the board woke up one day and said, no, I don't want Mr. Stevens to do that anymore, how much time are you going to give him? Because it, it's, it's in every document, how much, you know, how do you get out of it? And there has to be an escape clause, and this is it, the time. Thirty days, ninety days?
I, I think ninety days is way too long. I, I do think that if he gave us a two-week warning. I I do think that if he gave us a two-week warning, as long as it wasn't during an elective election cycle. For instance, once, once the the early ballots are mailed out, let's say, so what is that, 30 days? Yeah, I don't know exactly the days, but we don't want to have it happen too close to an election. I think that would be very hard on the public. So I I would say that it needs to be two weeks unless it is during an election cycle and then have maybe 30 days.
Would 45 days be acceptable?
Yeah, 45 is fine.
Okay, put it down, 45 days.
If that's good with you guys.
And just to clarify, because that another provision that Supervisor Judd, you mentioned that if it's prior to an election. So that's another time requirement that you can add to the document that if it's suggested six months or nine months prior to a primary or a general election, either party cannot withdraw from the agreement because you're trying to build in consistency into the election process. So a shorter timeframe means uncertainty to the voters and to the community. So would that be in consideration? That if there was a point in time that either party want to withdraw from this agreement, it cannot be done either six months prior to a primary.
The general, oh, a primary.
Or six months prior to a general election because processes are already in place.
My comment would be it's always prior to an election and 45 days is to stick with that.
I think six months seems like a long time. But if it were to the general, can we find out exactly when ballots are printed, when the final ballots are printed? Maybe it should not be after the final ballots are printed. So that's that is a distinct date. I think it's somewhere in June, July. So it should not be after the final ballots are printed, even for the primary. If that's possible, I mean, there there could be other ways for him to escape or for us to escape. We all know that. And I really, I value his thoughts on this. He knows more about all those dates than we do. So if he could, you know, we'll make a suggestion, let's leave it at 45 days and then suggest that we have a longer time prior to the election and see what he says.
Okay, does that give you something to put in writing that we will submit to Mr. Stevens for his comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there anything else?
Yes, so communication to the board. So now that the administrative or once it's voted on, the administrative and managerial functions of elections is to the recorder, how would communications be established to present any information to the board? How would you, how would the board like the recorder to communicate to the board?
As requested by either party, meaning the board or the recorder.
So as needed?
I think, yeah, I think following the patterns we have summarily had. We usually have a couple of work sessions with the elections a year, more particularly on election years. But we have reports afterwards, sometimes follow-ups, but just like we've always done.
So those conversations will be done in a work session?
That would be fine, as requested. I mean, if if Ms. If the recorder wants to talk to us, he requests to talk to us, he can talk to us. If two-thirds of us say we want to talk to the recorder, then we can talk to the recorder.
I don't know if we need to be that specific, but yes, it would be fine to hold a work session as needed. And of course, whenever there are statutory duties where we have to be made aware of what's going on and then vote on that afterwards, we are going to need to probably have that presentation in a work session. For instance, redistricting, for instance, our polling places, polling locations. We usually get those described to us in that setting. So those things that we're statutorily responsible for, we will have those communications. But I don't think that's going to be a big issue, so go ahead and mention that however you wish.
Is there anything else that you want to add to this document? I think that he has noted all of your suggestions for the document.
There's one other question. The power to contract with other municipalities for election services. Would the board be willing to give that authority to the recorder?
Yes.
I I I think that Ms. Judd mentioned that she'd like to give the administrative and managerial, but not the statutory. And routinely, it's been the board that works with other institutions, so.
Right, because we have the, we have the ability to to make those contracts through the legal department in the county. And I I feel like that's more of a cohesive cohesive thing. So I I think if he does need to do outside contracting, it should come to the board. Just the same as he's not going to be canvassing the election and certifying it. And he is not going to be setting up the the or doing the precincts when it's time for redistricting. Those kind of things have to be the board. And I think this contract between counties and other other jurisdictions, in other words, would be would something the board would need to do.
Madam Judd, I would accept legal expenses. In other words, not include legal expenses unless they are pre-approved by the board. In other words, I have a beef with the open meeting law provisions, which I've discussed before about incurring legal expenses prior to the board's approval. So I would accept that.
I'm not, I'm not hearing what you want in the document about.
Even if that was, even if that didn't, wasn't intended to be about.
Can't hear you, Ms. Judd, can't hear you. Can't hear you, you've gone away.
I I'm not. Oh, no.
Okay, now I can hear you.
I don't know why. Okay, can you hear, can you hear me now? Okay, if there's any type of, what he's saying is if there's any type of legal thing, we we definitely want to have the board discuss that. But but just working with other jurisdictions, IGAs and those type of things, we do need our legal counsel in the county or county attorney's office to prepare those documents for us. And I think that's a more cohesive relationship than the treasurer trying to go around us and and make those agreements with other jurisdictions. We, those need to be between us. So I think we need to keep that in the board, and I I think I heard Mr. Crosby agreeing that with that.
Yes, I should have been more specific to say outside legal services. I would accept that. In other words, not approve outside legal services unless it was approved by the board prior to incursion of expenses.
So another question, is there anything that the board would not want to delegate to the recorder's office in this agreement?
I think I heard none of the statutory requirements for the board are to be delegated, only managerial and administrative.
Is there anything additional?
Only only to fall back on subject to other provisions of the law and section 11251, starting out the the duties of the Board of Supervisors.
Maybe you understood that, but I didn't. Could you repeat that in?
Well, i- if you want to give me the time to look up the statute, I can read it again. I have many times, but basically it says the county is responsible for everybody, everything, and especially all the money. But it also starts off with subject to other provisions of the law. So without knowing every other provision of the law, you can't necessarily define exactly what it is, as try as we might.
Okay.
I'm satisfied with, I'm satisfied. I'm I'm ready for for the county administrator to move on with that action, so.
Is there a need or or could we ask for a time to look at this document before it goes to Mr. Stevens? Or do you want to just put it on the agenda? How do you want to handle it?
If it's on the agenda, the document will be available to us and everybody else in the public. So either way.
But Mr. Stevens is going to have input, that's what I understood.
Yes, that's why I asked the question.
Before we vote on it, right? Before we vote on it, okay.
So I guess what I'm saying is direction. Is it okay? Are you thinking that Mr. Karwats can put together this information? Give it to Mr. Stevens, have him comment on it before the final document is put together for board approval? Is that what you're wanting?
I'm going to expedite. So whatever it takes to expedite the process, we're sitting here with no elections director. So I want to expedite.
And and I do believe that once it has been reviewed and and Mr. Stevens has had his input, it could be put on an agenda. So I don't know that we need another work session. That would probably not be helpful.
That's what I'm getting. I agree with you, Madam Judd. Anything that can be said in a work session can be said in a regular meeting and voted on. That's my point.
So, Mr. Karwatska, and and Tim, I'm sure Tim is taking notes over there, our clerk. Do you have sufficient information and direction to at least write the draft of the contract or IGA between the Board of Supervisors and the county recorder for election functions?
So I I have enough information to proceed in working with the county attorney to draft an agreement. However, before we conclude, obviously, the board has heard from everyone in the audience, has heard multiple positions. So I just need to be clear that that's what the the board wants me to proceed in working on this agreement for the vote for the board at the next board meeting. So if the board at this point in time indicate whether they want me to proceed in this way, that's the final action that I need.
Hey, Ms. Judd, are you wanting him to go forward and get this put together with the help of the county attorney and Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
To the county attorney, and like I said, unless the county attorney does not want to do this, then we should hire outside counsel again. But I also have section 11251 powers of the board right here. If you want me to read it to you, I'd be glad.
I've read it several times, I I know what the powers of the board are. Yes. Okay. That being said, now do you have sufficient information?
Supervisor Crosby, is that, is that how you want to proceed?
Yes.
Madam Chair. That's, that concludes my questions for the board, and that gives me enough information to proceed.
You deserve an answer when you ask me that question, and I didn't. I I didn't choose to go this direction. I wanted, but the two board members wanted all of this. I wanted to make sure that they had in this document what they wanted, not what I wanted. I'm simply trying to be the, I don't know if you'd call it the referee or not, because it's just a matter of we need to make sure things are done appropriately, you know, in the public purview. So as long as they are happy with the stipulations that they have put down for this document, then I think that we are ready to move forward.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And just once again, nothing's being decided or voted on today.
Right. And of course, you know that when things are on the agenda, you will have notice and you will know when it is being placed on the agenda. And it will certainly be dependent on how soon we can get the document put together and and the discussions with Mr. Stevens for it to be agendaed. Having said that, there's no further business. The next meeting will be on Thursday, February the 23rd at 10:00 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room for a work session regarding election integrity and security, election processes and possible changes to pursue in Cochise County. This this meeting, this work session was set by Ms. Judd before this meeting, and it is still on our schedule. So that's the next meeting that's on our schedule. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned.